Except I just turned the recorder off. This is June 7, 2022. Today is, today is June 7, 2022. This is the Bluff Town Council Regular Meeting. Roll call.
Linda Sosa.
This Luann, well, there you go. That was Jim Sayers. I think I crashed over him.
Yeah.
Jim?
Yeah.
Anne Lepin.
I said my name.
I couldn't pick up all of it because people kept talking over each other. So, all right. And Erin Richards, our town manager is also present. So, the first item agenda is approval of the Bluff Town Council Regular Meeting Minutes of May 17, 2022. Has everybody received them, read them, and are there any changes, amendments, points of discussion?
I read them, and they look good. I'll make a motion to present them as approved, approve them as presented.
Am I an excused absence on those?
You are.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Did you want to be?
Of course. I want to be excused for all kinds of things.
Is there a second?
No second.
Any discussion? The all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Anyone opposed? All right, then it's unanimous. The approval of the meeting minutes from May 23, 2022. Again, has everybody received them and read them? Are there any?
Got to make my question to.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And I abstain.
Anyone opposed? All right, it's unanimous. Public comment. There will be a three-minute time limit for each person who wishes to speak. The controller, who will now be, from now on, Erin Richards, the town manager, she will mute you and let you know that you've exceeded your time. So, if anyone wants to make a public comment, let us know. We'll give it a minute. Okay.
I think so.
We're not hearing or seeing any public comment, and we'll go ahead to the agenda. I'd like to make a suggestion that because we have Dave Bastian on from Canyon Country Discovery Center, and we have Vaughn Pattenfall from Friends of Cedar Mesa, that maybe we move those two items up to the beginning so that if they choose to leave, they don't have to sit through the entire meeting. We're certainly free to stay, but sometimes people who are just presenting would prefer to get on and off. So, anybody opposed from the council to do that?
Let's make that adjustment, Mayor.
All right. So, let's start with number 11, which would now be number one. And I'll have myself thoroughly confused by the time I get down to 11. So, I mean that we've already done it. So, this is the update on the work from May 23, 2022 with Canyon Country Discovery with Dave Bastian, the community grant, and possible projects, including Barwell and Giant Cane. So, I'm going to turn this over to Dave and Ma'am Hook, and I'm going to mute myself in case I echo.
Well, thanks for giving me some time. I guess in terms of the last project, we, it was a great project for us. I'm assuming that's the trail that we did last year, and it was a fantastic project from our standpoint. I had the chance to actually check it out, and I know we actually even got a little bit of social media. We were able to find a few posts from community members who were actually getting out and enjoying the trail. In terms of kind of what I'm proposing today, and is there anything else, Luann, you wanted to talk about with the last year's project, or?
No, I just think that, just as an introduction to who you are, you're from Canyon Country Discovery Center up in Monticello, and he has a crew of workers that he pulls together, most of them native usually, and they do hands-on work projects, and he's also associated with the AmeriCorps, which is how we all got tied together, was the other AmeriCorps projects we've been doing with them, based at the mission and so on. But no, go ahead. I just want to make sure everybody knows who you are.
Sure, yeah. So, for those of us who aren't familiar with the Canyon Country Youth Corps, we're the Sustainability Program at the Canyon Country Discovery Center, which is not too far away. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance at least once to visit up there, if not a few times. If you haven't, go check us out. You know, we are in Monticello, kind of at the base of the Abajos where the windmills are. And the Canyon Country Youth Corps is our program. It is an AmeriCorps program. We get our funding through the state. So, we're a state AmeriCorps program, and we take young people roughly age 18 to 25. Sometimes with vets, we go up to 35. And we train them, give them, you know, Wilderness First Aid, chainsaw certification, trail training, fence training, and we put them to work on conservation projects all over the Colorado Plateau and Utah. As Luann said, we predominantly work with indigenous youth, a lot of Navajo youth from the Navajo chapters in San Juan County, and then also a lot of Northern Arizona youth, also from Navajo chapters, a little less, but still some youth from the Hopi Reservation, and then a handful of kids just kind of coming from anywhere. You know, what we give our members is a kind of a chance to have a career pathway into public lands management. We do some interesting things that a lot of Corps don't. We provide some writing assistance for our members, because a lot of them have never tackled things like resumes, cover letters. So, we do that on their off time. We have a public lands reader to kind of introduce them to public lands management, not just the how of what we do, but also the why. Why are we cutting down tamarisk and Russian olive? So, you know, I'm really proud of our program, and maybe some of you got a chance to meet some of our members last year on that project. I know there were some community volunteers who actually got out and got their hands dirty on that trail. I think that was one of the few projects we actually had community volunteers on, because so many of our projects are so remote, it can be really challenging to get anyone out there. So, that's us in a nutshell. You know, I guess what I'd talk about next is kind of what I'm proposing, and that is I want to tackle a Forever Our Rivers grant. Forever Our Rivers is a four corners-based foundation. Perhaps you've heard of them, maybe not. They're relatively new. I think this is the first year where they're really actually giving out some funding for on-the-ground restoration in a fairly large way. And so, what I'd like to do is go after around, roughly around 10 grand to do some arundo work, arundo, also known as giant cane. This is definitely something that you, you know, I'm happy that you are all, that arundo is on your agenda, because it is, the communities in cottonwood, Arizona is where I first saw arundo, and they let it go too long, and now they're really having some rough times tackling it. So, I think now is a great time to try to tackle it. 10 grand would give us a little over two weeks of work. So, you know, obviously, we're not going to solve the problem in that time, but it will also introduce, you know, this potential partnership I'm talking about, Canyon Country Youth Corps and the City of Bluff, to the Forever Our Rivers organization, and, you know, kind of get them, us on their radar. I talked to the director a few weeks ago to conference, and she was quite excited to see a grant from us. And so, I went ahead and did a little preliminary work on the grant, just knowing that you might be interested. That work wasn't in vain, because I can use that work for other grants if you decide you don't want to pursue this. But that, in a quick nutshell, I don't want to take too much time, but that is what I'm proposing. And I can answer any questions anyone might have.
I have a question. What is it? Can, this sounds really good, Dave, and really appreciate all the things you're doing. It sounds wonderful, really excellent. And what specifically can we do to move you forward?
I mean, I think number one would be just to prove it. And then, if anyone is particularly eagle-eyed when it comes to editing, I would certainly love to share the draft with anyone who wants to see it before I submit it. This is, so we are an approved partner with Forever Our Rivers, so we can submit the grant. It'll be a little interesting to try this, because ordinarily, how it would work is usually our partner would submit the grant, and then we would do an agreement with you. You know, we're going to submit the grant this time. We're still going to need an agreement, but I think that agreement will change a little bit. So, and if we don't get the grant, then we try for something else.
Can we do a vote on this, Mayor, tonight, or does it have to be on the agenda as a vote?
No, we can do a vote on it.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you, Dave.
Sure.
I want to echo Jim's comments, Dave. That sounds like a great, great program and great work that y'all are doing. So, thanks for partnering at Bluff, offering to partner with us. And I think before we get off the subject, we'll have a resolution here shortly, I think.
Awesome. Great. And I guess the only other thing I would say, in addition to kind of your question, Jim, it'd be great to see, I would love to see, you know, if there's an interest in maybe doing some work with the members. You know, I'm always looking for opportunities to kind of do some, you know, sort of cross-generational, you know, joint efforts.
How many generations are you talking about?
I mean, you know, these folks are 18 to 25, so I'll let you decide.
Well, I would think we can certainly provide a nice group of one generational section.
Yeah.
Linda, do you have anything you want to ask before I turn this over to Lou?
Um, no, I'm good. Thank you.
And I would echo the same thing. This is amazing. We know we've got a problem here, but I think stopping it before it gets outrageous would be a good idea. Lou, I'm going to let you, you know, kind of interact here and take the lead on this piece.
Okay. Well, what I just want to explain mostly to you all and to any of our listeners, that arundo, giant cane, false bamboo, it's called all of those things. And I did forward on, Jim Hook sent, found a video that was called "A Walk Through: Arundo Removal Recipe", and that one is quite eye-opening. Part of the flood control, they planted it as flood control. The, what was it, the CCC, I believe planted it as a flood control. But what happens now is it floods and undercuts, and it's not very deeply rooted. So, it washes away, plugs a river, and then floods all the farming areas. So, it's quite a problem. And then it goes in and becomes one species across the river bottom, much like the tamarisk did. And then it's a huge fire danger. It burns really hot. There was a fire down in, over in Pueblo, Colorado this week, that sent up a huge plume from that exact stuff. So, right now, we just have it as an ornamental problem. And so, getting in and getting that, what they'll do is cut it, cut it off, burn, or whatever we do with that part, and then put spray on the stumps. We've got one experimental site from last year when we did it with the AmeriCorps group over there at the corner of the old school and the highway by the fort. And that one, the county has identified it as their biggest weed problem. That's the biggest focus in the town of Bluff this year. So, they came by and they sprayed it, because that was the next step in this experiment. So, we let it grow back. It came back a couple feet, and then they sprayed it. So, you might see it. It's all kind of droopy, and it was blue for a couple days, and then it is a drooping. There's the other site that we did, we dug it all out and haven't, I think there's one little resprout, but the others came out. But it was a young, little, fresh batch of stuff. These big, huge ones, I'd say are next to impossible to dig out.
I'd like to offer a motion to support Mr. Bastian in his initiative and support the application to Forever Our Rivers as a partner.
And to prevent it from getting in the river is huge. So, I appreciate, I think we're really lucky that we've got it identified as soon as we did. So, I would second that.
Any further comments? The all in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Before we move off of that topic, let's find out what we need to be doing. Jim, I know, it's years. I know that you frequently look at grants and are pretty good at editing. I don't know if you want to take a look at it before Dave submits it. I'm totally fine with it just going, but I don't know if you want to.
Sure.
I'd like to look at it, too. You can send it to me, too.
Yeah. Since I have, maybe since I have your email, Luann, I'll send it to you, and you can send it to Jim.
Okay, sure.
Yeah. The more ayes, the better. So.
Great.
Yeah.
Thanks so much, Dave.
And then, Dave, if there's anything else that you need from us, just reach out and let us know. I know your, the timeframe is pretty short, like the 17th or something?
Yeah. You know, like I said, I did do some initial work on it. I'm going to be out of town the next two days, but I'm going to devote a good chunk of Monday to it. This will be a fast turnaround. Probably what I'll do is get it to Luann on Monday, and I'd like to submit it by close of business on Tuesday, the 14th, because it's due the 15th. I could submit it on the 15th. I just prefer not to. So, I actually had that experience today when something went wrong with the software, and I went right up to the deadline. So, I don't really like doing that. So.
Dave, one question I know we'll get is matching funds and that kind of thing. And if you could just tell us how that works, that would be good, just for the record.
Yeah. So, they accept in-kind as a match, and as an AmeriCorps program, we can count the value between the education award, or not the education award, actually, the living allowance that we pay. Our folks kind of walk this fine line between volunteers and labor. So, we pay them a living allowance. We can take the difference between that and their hourly value, and that counts as an in-kind match. So, that's more than enough for this grant. And that's generally the case with most every grant we do, that in-kind match counts. So, on the rare occasion that we need a cash match, we do have some donors who often put that up, but that's pretty rare. In this case, that in-kind is more than enough.
Thank you. Erin, could you track down from Lou, if you don't have that link to the YouTube on the giant cane, and maybe we could get that on the website for people who want to see it?
You've got it.
I sent it out this afternoon. Actually, it should be in everybody's email.
So, in the council's email, correct?
Right. But I sent it to Erin, too, because she was at the meeting with Dave and I on that last meetings.
But you didn't send it to the town, correct, or link it? I just want to be sure I'm not duplicating work.
No, Erin has it. She can put it on the website or however that part works, but she's got it. So, you don't have to worry about me sending it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dave. This is great, and good luck.
Yeah, thanks. I think we'll be, I think we have a good chance of this, and if not this, it'll be something else.
Appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
All right, then. We'll move to what's now, what was number 16 is now number two under new business, Friends of Cedar Mesa's request for use of the Bluff Community Center on September 23rd, 24th, and 25th. Vaughn?
Hey, everybody. I'm just kind of touching base here. We had discussions and celebrate Cedar Mesa. We're hoping to have going again since COVID, but we run up against the 75-person limit at the community center, which obviously, we can't do celebrate Cedar Mesa for that low of a number of people. So, it will force us to actually hold it in Blanding, which is not my preferred situation, but that's what we'll have to do unless you guys think that there's a possibility of changing the limitations of group size. It's basically the one day in the community center where we hold, you know, lectures and things like that. The other day, you know, we have our, we'll have our party at Twin Rocks, and we'll have some events at the Beak. But we would certainly love to be able to use the community center for our events.
How many people are we talking about, Vaughn?
We've always had between 250 to 300.
Okay.
And then we have a, we cut it off right around there.
Is that kind of what you're going to do this year?
Pardon me?
Is 200 kind of, 250 kind of what you're expecting?
I would expect that we would, yeah, it would be the 250 to possibly 3. We certainly are expecting to, you know, require vaccinations, masks inside, you know, all of the kind of classic things. And, you know, if the whole world is going crazy with COVID again in the fall, that, you know, then it changes things for everybody. But we're just trying to hope we can plan as long as things are, you know, safe enough that we could hold the event in Bluff.
Mayor, I've got a couple of questions, but yeah, go ahead and let some of you other guys.
Well, why don't you stick with your question since you jumped in and asked the question?
Well, it's not really a question. It's, my thought is that we should allow the friends to use that facility and say no, they're way around Bluff, and know what our restrictions have been, and they're an in-town group. So, my, I'm leaning to say, let's plan on having that here unless things change. So, that's what I have to say.
And I guess I would agree with Brandt in that, you know, we've moved on. I, we hope we've all moved on, and the cases will come up and down, but I feel like we can give Friends of Cedar Mesa that decision on, and their people, it's a self-limiting number. If it becomes an issue, people aren't going to come. If, you know, if Friends of Cedar Mesa says, no, this isn't worth it, they will cancel. So, in my opinion, if you have 75 people spreading something, or 300, it's kind of all the same. So, I would say we just need to remove the cap and let the community center be used by the people that want to use it.
Lou, are you talking about taking the cap off totally, or just for this event?
I would just take it off. I think it complicates things unnecessarily.
Is there a fire code maximum for the building?
Yes.
What's that?
It's 300.
Oh, okay.
And if everybody thinks back, we had, I think, and Vaughn can correct me, but I think for Sally Jewell's visit, we had 300, a limit of 300 as people were going in. And so, thinking back to how close people were, that's what that would be if you had 300 in there all at once, which I've never seen at Friends of Cedar Mesa for the lectures. There are some lectures that get just an old handful, and then some that they do fill the room, but they don't pack it.
Yeah. And we're not doing like all the, you know, some of the things we used to do in the past, all the auctions and all that kind of stuff. So, it'll be a little less complicated, and that stuff kind of took up space, too.
So, if we want, yeah, excuse me. So, if we wanted to do this, would we suspend the current policy, or what, how would we actually want to implement this if we wanted to allow this?
Well, I think what Lou is suggesting is that we just get rid of the cap of 75. I'm holding my thoughts until I see what else Linda might have, you all might have.
So, I support doing this, and I think it's really good that it's several months in the future. I would like to keep the cap, the current cap, a while, a bit longer.
I, I'm with everyone else. I think that it's something we want to keep in the community. I don't agree everybody is local. I know a lot of people come in from outside of the state. So, we'll have a mix of people who don't live here, but I'm not as concerned about that, because the reality is, we can move for a meeting within five minutes to cancel the contract if we have to. So, if the numbers spike up, and Friends of Cedar Mesa isn't doing what we think they should be doing, we can take control of that. And I think that, you know, that's just true of any of the contracts right now. And COVID controls, your contract could be canceled if things change. But I'm all in favor of doing the event. Lou?
Just from an organizer's point of view, I think they kind of need to know that it will be available, and it will be up to them to cancel unless there's an emergency order of some sort, because they do need to have a place if they're holding a wedding or whatever it might be. People need to know that that venue is solid, and they're not at the whim of, you know, unless it's an emergency. I think that we need to remove the cap and then let the people decide.
Okay. So, I, let's go to the cap as a separate issue.
Mayor?
Hold on, Brandt. Sorry, let me just finish my thought on that. I disagree, because I think it's a public health issue and a safety issue. And I think that we should always take the position that particularly in a time where we are not out of the pandemic, the numbers went from more or less five today to 13 in less than a week. So, I believe, and I'm going to hold firm to my belief, we control the right for public safety to cancel a contract. Would we do it without any fourth, you know, any kind of thought or discussion or input from FCM or anybody? No. But I, I'm not willing, myself personally, to vote to say that it's up to the person coming in or the group coming in to make that decision. And that's all, that can go with the cap. We can talk about that. Let's stick with FCM. Brandt?
I'll make a motion, Mayor, to allow FCM to hold their event up to 300, up to the fire limit there. And when I said locals, I meant locals would be orchestrating the planning. So, I know we'll have out-of-town people, but I think the planning and the safety factor will be handled by locals. That's it. That's my motion.
Yeah, I'll second.
Any further discussion or questions? The all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then it's unanimous. Then, I assume Vaughn, you'll continue to work with Carol, our manager, and get all the paperwork and everything ready.
Yeah, yeah. So, thanks a lot. And, you know, I mean, if the world goes nuts, we don't want, we don't want to endanger, I'm not endangering my employees and all of that either.
We trust, we trust you guys, Vaughn.
We are going to enforce the, you know, we need to, you know, verify that you have your vaccinations, all that kind of stuff. So, I appreciate your thoughts and consideration for this.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Thank you.
Yep.
So, on changing the cap, we really need to put that on next week's agenda, but I'll put it on there right now.
I think, I think we don't need to, unless Lou's really adamant about it. I think we could just see what comes up, Mayor. I don't see if we need to talk about it again. Let's see how it goes for the next month or so.
I think Luann has the right to make her pitch, so let's just keep it on.
I do, too, if she wants to do that. I'm just telling you where I am.
I'm going to take the fact that she raised it as she'd like to talk about it. So, I've got that on, Lou. You don't have to remind me, unless I lose my card, then if I lose my.
And if you want to wait till somebody else asks, that's mine, too. It would save some agenda time. If somebody else asks, and we have to consider it over 75, we can put it on then, raise the cap and consider an alternative.
Well, maybe that's a good way to do it, since Carol will be alerting us if somebody has that. Come on. Okay. Now, it's off the agenda for next week. Going back to unfinished business number one. So, everybody has a copy of the amended 2022 budget that had gone out a week or two ago, and then the tentative 2023 budget. We talked about these in our work session and in at least one meeting. I find to, I didn't do anything to 2022 amended. That's exactly what you had when we did the work session and made the changes, and I sent it out. On the 2023, because nobody had raised the issue with me about putting a category in to cover the CCC possible costs or needs, it was making me nervous to not have something. So, in the past, we've used miscellaneous category to account for additional spending that was not specified. So, you'll see that I added a $10,000, excuse me, a $10,000 miscellaneous category to cover miscellaneous, but also because we don't know what the budget for the CCC looks like and the expenses right now that we put know what the budget for the CCC looks like and the expenses right now that we put in for projected expenses in 2023 are pretty much utilities and maintenance kind, basic maintenance with the janitorial piece. So we don't really have much money accounted for in that budget. So I asked an accountant to add that category and he did, so I sent that back out. So I need to have, or I would like to have a vote, a motion and a vote on amended 2022 and then a motion and a vote for the tentative 2023 so that, um, we can approve the resolutions and move them off to, uh, Dave Sanderson for filing with the state. Um, now there's one other caveat. You'll note that the, um, discussion and vote on the resolution for the 2023 certified tax rate is number two. So the certified tax rate is the rate that, um, the county assessor calculates and submits to the state or the state gives some data and he's, he calculates. At any rate, it comes from San Juan County Assessor's Department to us on or before, well, not on or before, before, June 8th. And tomorrow is June 8th and we don't have that certified tax rate. Now the certified tax rate is, um, primarily important if we decided we were going to raise taxes. And if we were going to raise taxes rather than everything being due in June, everything with, for 2023 would be pushed out because we have to hold a truth in taxation, um, hearing for the public, we'd have to do some other things in order to raise the tax. You can lower tax and it doesn't require that, but raising it requires that step. And I know we've talked in the past, so I think, um, unless somebody's changed their mind, we've had a consensus that we would stay with the certified tax rate, which is what it's been with the BSA and what it's been with us. I talked with, um, Chris McAnany today about whether I should hold off on requesting a vote on the resolution to adopt these two budgets until we had the certified tax rate. And he said there wasn't any reason to do that because, um, if we're not changing the tax rate, it's going to be relatively the same amount of money. And I can tell you right now, the amount of work that goes into the budget, right now, I think we have a projected of 31,000 for the tax amount. Even if it came in at 35,000, it wouldn't be worth adjusting the budget again to do another round of analysis. That 4,000 is not going to make any difference one way or another. Um, and I seriously doubt that it could come in lower because San Juan County has adjusted property tax values upward rather than downward. So with that in mind, I'm going to ask you to, um, go ahead and look at those budgets and make a motion, if you will, to approve them and defer number two. And I'll explain why I'm deferring number two now. We did not get that certified tax rate today. We didn't get it this week. I have not had a response from San Juan County Assessor's Office to my questions as to when we would expect it. And our accountant is going to be doing the certified tax rate for us. That calculation has to be done in the state once we get the tax rate. So I'm quite comfortable after talking with our attorney and knowing that we are expecting about the same, we can approve the certified tax rate when it comes in hopefully by next week. That being said, I talked to Blandings Chief Financial Officer this afternoon. No, I'm not mistaken, we did not get it, um, this week and they did not get it and they don't anticipate getting it until probably the middle of the month after or slightly on or after their, everyone's last meeting of the month. So I don't want to hold up getting these filed with the state audit, approved and filed with the state auditor unless some of you have a serious objection and then I will definitely defer to that.
Motion to approve the amended 2022 budget.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the tentative 2023 budget.
And I'll second that. And Mayor, that's, that's with that little correction you added for the miscellaneous, I'm assuming.
Yes, it is.
All right.
Any discussion or questions for me? Then all in favor say aye. All right?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Anyone opposed? Then it's unanimous. Thank you. I will sign the resolutions and get them to Linda for posting and then I will notify Dave Sanderson, our accountant, who will then put them on the state auditor website. So thank you all. I appreciate all the help.
I'll heart, heart to you girls. What else?
Okay. So number two, I'm going to hold on to that till next week and hope that we have it from, uh, Lyman Duncan by then. I just want to point out that Lyman's not in this alone because two years out of the three, Don David Nielsen forgot we'd incorporated and I didn't get the certified tax rate on time. So things are not bad in that strongly. Number three, review of the state's restrictions on, uh, fire and vote on a possible resolution. I just want to point out that on the 2nd of June, at 12:01 a.m., the state, what, um, State Department of Natural Resources, Division of Forestry, Fire, State Land puts San Juan County in a stage two fire restriction. The stage two includes everything in stage one. Stage one includes no open fires of any kind except in established public facilities or incriminately constructed fire pits at private homes where running water is present. Number two, no smoking exits within an enclosed vehicle, trailer or building, a developed recreation site or while stopped in an area that is paved or free from dry vegetation. Number three, no fireworks, tracer ammunition or other pyrotechnic devices, including exploding targets. Number four, no cutting, welding or grinding metal, metal in areas of dry vegetation. And number five, no operating a motorcycle, chainsaw, ATV or other small internal combustion engine without an approved antifreeze spark arrestor. When you move to stage two, stage two includes everything in stage one, no open fires of any kind, compressed or liquid gas, grills, stoves, fire pits with a shut-off valve are allowed with proper clearance of flammable material. So no fire kits that are just sitting out there, no, uh, charcoal grills that are open and spark. And then plus all of the restricted activities listed in stage one. And so, discussion?
Um, we need to be careful with five and we need to vote on this resolution for these fire restrictions and I'll make that motion.
Is that, are you voting for stage two?
Brant, are you voting for stage one or two?
Oh, I didn't think, I didn't realize we, we could, uh, shoot.
So let, let me back up for a second. So stage one that I read, you could motion for stage one or you could motion for stage two or not make a motion. But the reason we need our own policy is because the state policy only affects unincorporated lands like ZITL, BLM, state lands or unincorporated areas.
Um, the BLM just went to stage two though, right?
For San Juan County, correct.
Yeah. Uh, Brant, if you make that motion for stage two, I think we'll be in business.
We should go stage two. We should match our neighbors.
Yeah.
So Jim?
I'll second.
Any discussion, any thoughts?
I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to intervene. I, I just, I, I have a graphic for what's listed in stage one and two if folks want to see that.
Sure. Go ahead. Thank you.
Share.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience with me, um, navigating this. Let's see.
Something in there.
I'm more used to, um, oh, sorry. Let me see if I, I can't share the whole thing. Maybe I can share a window. Yeah. I don't have the permissions for it. I apologize.
Do you concur that stage two is where we need to be, Anthony? Is that your feeling?
Um, I, I have, I have a, I, I'm really uncomfortable with, with making any kind of contributions to policy. Um, uh, there are a lot of, I, I feel like there are a lot of arguments to be made for people being able to have, um, you know, cooking fires, fire pits, those sorts of things in a reasonably cleared area. Um, and, and the jump from stage two to, stage one to stage two is a pretty big jump. Um, because stage two is just, um, anything that's a, you know, anything with a shut-off valve. That's the only thing, you know, incendiary that we can use. Um, I also understand that if that makes people more comfortable widely as a community, I don't have any problems with that and it makes things, it makes things simpler overall. So I think there's arguments for either.
Thanks for explaining that, Anthony. I appreciate that. It, it helps me understand better.
Anthony, do you know what Blanding, Monticello towns do? Not that they're similar because they have so much grass and, you know, kind of a different sort of town setup, but do you know what they do?
I don't offhand. I'm sorry. I think, I think that's a really good question. I think, I think you're right that Blanding is a little bit, I don't, I don't know that Blanding goes to stage two. And I think because of the aforementioned pavement and the lawns.
And Lou, I, I think that both Blanding and Monticello have their meetings on the same nights we have, and I didn't see anything on the upcoming agendas. I don't know what they're doing. And this just came up in a, in a second.
Lou, have you got a feel for this? Been in the fire business for many years. What do you, Jim, have got any kind of advice for us?
Well, I'm really always paranoid about the bosque, what they call the bosque in New Mexico. It's the river bottom brush. Uh, it's exceptionally dry. It's, um, you know, and there's, there are buildups of, uh, tumbleweeds here and there. So, um, you know, I, I, I think the people in town are pretty aware, but it's useful to let the visitors know that this is, you know, if, we're, we're downwind from Sand Island, right? Okay. So, um, that's, that's a scary prospect sometimes with the wind.
So Brant, what is, what is your motion?
I know. Well, I am, I have like two partials out there, a one and a two. And Luanne Hook, what do you think?
Well, I, I'm torn because, you know, people that are safe could do coal burning, but I think that we ought to just go to stage two because like you say, Sand Island's in our area. Um, you know, there's a lot of town in our area and I think we can, ought to go to stage two. It should have probably been done a month ago down here. Our surrounding areas are, they look more up towards the hills where people are up in the mountains and whatnot. And we get drier a lot faster. So I think we're good to, to miss the fires.
That's my motion, Mayor.
That's Lou. I've got a second on it, whatever it is.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to move to stage two, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then it's unanimous. It's five for it. Same thing. I'll sign the, um, resolution and get it over to you after I do some, uh, cleanup on the numbers and everything. All right. Then moving to number four. Brant, Jim, if you want to take four, which is the update on the CCC design review team and any fire suppression information.
Yeah, I can, I can go ahead with that if you want, Brant. Um, we had a meeting today at two o'clock. Uh, the, uh, one of the UDB representatives was on time. The other one came in about 20 minutes in or so, 30 minutes in. Um, and we discussed the joint UDB Town of Bluff account, uh, and any policies. And as I understand it, um, if, correct me if I don't recall this correctly, but I think Chris has already set up this mechanism for this joint account and he may have written some policy for us. I don't know. But, uh, the, the design review committee will go along with whatever policies are recommended by the mutual entities on this. Uh, what we're just, we're seeking is a joint account that requires multiple signatures or at least one signature from each side. We don't have to worry about it right now because no funds have been drawn from any, um, any grant, including the NDN grant yet. So we're all right there. Um, if there are any questions about this joint account that I probably won't be able to answer, but we're going to do it. Uh, if there are no questions on, yes.
Um, I just have a question. Do you feel like there's an advantage to doing that rather than just each of us paying our own share from our own accounts?
Yeah, it's contractual. It's in the contract. We have to do it. So the, uh, the contract calls for a joint account to be shared by the two entities. And, uh, at some point when we divide, uh, and this is sort of, um, a little fuzzy, but we know that at some point the, the two entities will divide the school condominium style with ownership. And at that point, I think we will probably be spending our, our money on what we want and their money on what they want. And they're going to spend their money on what they want. But for right now, these monies and such that come in will be, uh, for the benefit of the entire building, as I understand it through phase one and two. We'll see.
Jim, that actually was a question I wanted to clarify. In reading the contract, I did see that entities can maintain separate accounts for their respective areas. However, currently it is all under shared. So when, when UDB is talking about the grants that they were pursuing, the Indian grant, what was their, is that shared money? Is that not shared money? What was the final conclusion on that?
Uh, it pretty specifically, I think in the grant, correct me if you're, if I'm wrong, uh, Mayor, but I believe it said that we are seeking a fire suppression system for the building and that would definitely benefit both, uh, entities. So, uh, that's an easy call. That's phase one. That's, uh, clearly something that the building needs. And so, uh, at what point we start separating and how that is done, uh, I'll cross, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. I think we'll be okay.
So, so my recollection, I haven't looked at the acquisition agreement for a while, but my recollection is that it requires the joint account to be set up to get us through the final stages of renovation and then this condominium division.
Correct.
Separate accounts are kept by each entity to be able to funnel monies for their payments for utilities and those kinds of things back and forth. There's no idea that we'd be putting joint money into the, the account, that that's just an operational account if I remember correctly. And it's pretty well spelled out that that continues until we get to the point of concluding the renovations and the improvements. I talked with Chris a week or two ago and he, um, was waiting for the go-ahead, which I gave him today to draft a joint resolution for the, uh, checking or the, the banking account. What he will need is after he does the resolution, uh, both sides will need to know what the recommended bank is by the design review committee so that we can insert it into the resolution to be able to vote on it. Uh, and Chris, I gave him the go-ahead today because it was a little muddied to me on Saturday when we, when, uh, Jim, you and I met with Dave Conine and Lee Kapalowski. It was very muddy to me as to what we were suggesting that joint account looked like and that resolution looked like. So I'd like to go ahead with having Chris drafted and talk with Lee Kapalowski, who appear who apparently is again acting as legal counsel for UDB, and get, and, you know, a consensus on what that resolution looks like, and then you would bring it back to your respective boards and councils.
Yeah, I drafted a resolution. It's probably pretty weak for the recommendation of the bank to be Zion's because of the convenience and because it just makes things a lot easier for us, and I don't think it matters much to them. And I sent that along to you, Mayor. You may have received it, you may not have, but if you look around, you might find it. It's just, it's just a rewording of our own resolution to recommend Zion's, but it's out there in the email. So how, we'll, we'll, we'll keep working on this until it's complete. So we talked about that today. We talked about the grant updates. There are no grant updates except that there was some clarification of the proposal to NDN, and that was sent in, and I think you've got a copy of that, Mayor. So we didn't really discuss that very much today. We talked about another grant that is being worked on. I talked about the fire suppression estimate. I had to get the size of the inlet, the feed to the school from Marx Powell. I got that today, and I needed that to go to Cooper. And, and as I've mentioned, they have two, two possibilities of estimate and the work they would do. And the one is putting the system above the ceiling, and the other is putting the system below the ceiling. Below the ceiling is exponentially more inexpensive. Above the ceiling is really, would be problematic, but they could do it, and I think it's gonna cost a lot of money, but I'm gonna get estimates for both. And my sense is, is that I'll be able to get those within a, within a very short amount of time. Cooper's pretty on the ball. They're waiting for us at this point. So I'll be asking for that. We talked about new policies, the weed control, et cetera, and cleanup of the building. Apparently it's got, it's a bug mausoleum now. Somebody sprayed in there, and so there are lots of bugs all over the place, kind of gross. But I guess James is on that, Van Rinen. Have we heard anything from the Playground Committee on any repairs to the playground or anything further from the Recycling Committee? Both of those we would like to support. So if the Recycling Committee is looking for a spot, we, we might have it.
So the Recycling Committee is going to be scheduling a meeting probably next week. What we were waiting on is an estimate from Steve Helderson on what the cost of the recycling containers would be. He's got, he's got a line on two of them, and so I'm hoping that next week I'll have more information, but we're definitely moving forward.
We had, we had a guest, Ms. Richards was there at our meeting today, and I asked her at the meeting if she would ask the mayor not to schedule her for 2:00 on Tuesdays because she really brought a lot to our meeting today, so I just want to compliment Erin's visit to our meeting and ask if she could come often, frequently. We'd love having her.
Okay, let me get back to that, Brent. On the Playground Committee note, that's something we need to follow up on. We haven't heard anything from the Playground Committee since they had the inspections. And so I will make a note to follow up with them.
Okay, and we just had some news today that Heather Ateen has submitted her resignation, so she will no longer be a member of the DRC after her end date. I don't know when that is, some future. She was, anyway, I don't, that wasn't good news for me because I work well, I thought. And she has her office all set up over there. Whoever takes, goes in will use the same office that she's gotten, so. Other than that, that's about what's going on. I'll be calling Cooper Fire this week and getting that, those estimates and get them out to the, to the council. Any questions on any of that? Did I capture everything, Erin, or did I gloss over something important?
That's all. Thanks, Jim.
So I have two questions. Was the NDN grant actually approved and funds transmitted to UDB?
According to David, no. No mons, no funds have been drawn from NDN yet. Those were his words.
Okay, so was the grant actually approved?
They sent a letter saying it was.
There was a letter saying it was?
I thought so, yeah.
And who was?
When we talked today, he said no money had been drawn from the thing, so it sounded to me like it had been finalized, but I don't know.
Well, it would be nice to get a copy of the letter that finalizes the grant that we were included in without any consideration. So can somebody follow up with Dave and?
Yeah, I'll look, I'll look around.
Sure.
Okay, then the other question was who actually attended the meeting today?
Brent, myself, Erin, Dave Conine, and eventually Heather Ateen.
Does anybody else have questions?
I guess, you know, reading the grant is kind of confusing to me. I, you know, I assume at some point we'll go over it in more detail, but, you know, it talks about funding, but then it also talks about this money will go, be, how it's budgeted. And I, it looks like there isn't a whole lot budgeted for fire suppression out of about $100,000. So that's just something that confuses me in the future. We can look at.
Yeah, I think about half of what they estimate is, is in there. I think it's 50 grand or something for the fire suppression. And they've got, they've got a lot of categories. You're right. It's, it's messy, but, you know, money is messy. Sometimes, anyway. Any other questions?
Oh, one, one other question. Linda, have we received the payment from the first quarter of billing to UDB of Heather Ateen as leaving?
Good question.
We have not received that. I actually went over this morning or this afternoon and talked to her about it. So I wanted to see what the procedure was, and that's where I found out that she had resigned and would be leaving. So we talked about that, and I, I invoiced them on April 2nd, but I'm gonna change the invoice a little bit and, and bring it back to her this week. It, it shows how much, for that period of time, how much Town of Bluff pays and how much Denebekaia pays. And, and she felt it would be confusing if I submitted the invoice that just said what Denebekaia pays, so I will be doing that.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
In the contract, what was, and then I put your labor in this book. Does anybody remember what the timeframe in which that reimbursement has to be made?
30 days.
Okay, let's get on this one because if Heather Ateen is leaving, that's gonna be a hard position for them to fill in all probability, and we do not want to be expensing the entire building for a year while things get sorted out. So if one of you could talk, you know, about how we're going to make sure that payments are timely made at your next meeting, that might be helpful. Anything else? Okay, moving to number five, the update on Dr. Barantin's review analysis and recommendations. Put this on here, not so much to have the discussion tonight, but to make sure you're all on board with tomorrow morning, having read it and looked at it for the work session. Because I don't want to get to the work session tomorrow and have somebody say correctly or incorrectly that they didn't get the copy, and I want to be sure we've all looked at it so we don't spend a whole lot of time, you know, with this, you know, moving into the process. It's a pretty straightforward red, red line document that he did, some recommendations. So it'd be good to have that. So is there anyone from the council who didn't get anything on Dr. Barantin's suggestions? Good, so then that's all I have to say, and then I think we should just move on, but unless one of you wants to do something else? Because it's on the work session tomorrow. Okay, moving to number six, which is the update and discussion of issues related to roads and signs, review of the date for inspections of signs and general maintenance or maintenance. So in the last two weeks, we had a sign that was knocked down that was UDOT's, a stop sign. It was UDOT's responsibility, but given where it was, it needed to go back up, and so Steve Helderson got it back up and running quickly. I don't, I haven't looked to see if UDOT's actually replaced it, but he made UDOT aware of it, and they were taking care of that. I think that there were some recommendations by, by Steve Helderson as to some other things we should be doing with signs. And I've asked him on that and on the culverts to kind of put together what he sees we may need to be doing for maintenance. On roads, what I just wanted to point out is in the last maybe two weeks, we've had two or three issues come up from two or three different properties related to, one was a culvert and drainage over by Cadillac Ranch. One is the possibility of looking at whether there's a road on the south side of 191 next to the property that's by the washes, so Jackie Warren's to be specific, whether that was the road and whether the road that parallels the highway there is a road or whether it's just an access that's been created. There was a third one, and what I'd like to do is just assemble those and have, in July, have a work session that kind of, that addresses the four or five property issues that we need to look at one way or another. I talked with Marcia Hennfeld yesterday because I didn't, because they all kind of came in a bunch. I'm like, okay, does this go to P and Z first? Does it stay with me to look at and do an analysis and then bring it to us? Do we, you know, where does it fall? I think if everyone's comfortable, Marcia may talk about it at Planning and Zoning, but what she and I talked about a good way to handle these would be when they come to the Town Council, that if it's a land use issue, but we don't, it's not clearly a planning and zoning, which we just kicked at that. And it's not clearly a town non-issue that I can kick out. If it's something that's, that's kind of murky, yeah, we'll take a look at it and then hand it off to Planning and Zoning to do a more thorough analysis and make a recommendation. So I thought I'd do some kind of little form that we can use for those situations. But I, I did ask Chris McInnany to look at two of these for me, and since they're not on the agenda specifically, I'll put them on next week, but there are two that, that I need to raise with the council. So that, that generically is where we were with, with roads, with the exception that Michael Havikin went to the San Juan Transportation Board yesterday, and I'm putting him on the agenda for the 14th to get an update as to what he heard. The other thing that, I've been trying to make a list of things for the manager, the town manager as to deadlines or dates. I could not remember, Luann, what the annual date is for the sign inspection. What, I couldn't remember if it was fall or summer or spring. Do you know right offhand?
We don't, we don't have one that's nailed down. When I did it with San Juan County, I believe it was in the winter. I was planning on doing it this week, and I've got a, a young stick shift driver that needs some practice. It makes me kind of nauseous just to think about running around to all those signs again. But we have about 80 signs. They're on a list that isn't very easy to follow, so I'm hoping to put it on a map and then, but we can set a time. I think the summertime is probably the best, and I was planning to do it next week unless you want to wait and pick a different time.
No, and the reason I'm asking is that, under the Class C funds, we have to do it every year at a specific time, so I don't know. If we set the timer for was when, I know that when you did the inspection with San Juan County, that was the timeframe that they'd been using, and I couldn't remember when it was. So if you could look, and that's what we should target every year for that timeframe.
You know, thinking about the practical nature of it, Mayor, it might be smart if we did it in the winter, and we'd be ready for our busy spring, summer, and fall. So it might be we could, we could schedule, you know, in the future, February, something like that, exercise, and then we'd have them in place where the people get here.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to moving it to different weather. I just know that we have to do it every year. And I don't know if a year has gone by or not. That's what I'm saying. I'm not making myself clear. I don't know if a year has passed, and if a year has passed, we need to do it.
The year is, the year has passed. We, we need to, we need to do it if it's a requirement. I had understood more that it was just a legal sort of protection. The only place, you know, if a sign was knocked down, they'd say your sign was down, which is like UDOT at that intersection where they're coming on the highway. That's why that's so critical that they repair those kinds of signs because you're moving into fast-moving traffic. Our signs, you know, they, they, anyway, I bumped it up on the priorities since I saw you were wondering about it, but I'm happy to do it next week.
And I, and I could be misremembering, but my, my response was that, so.
I, I can't remember when we were gonna do it, but I do remember trying to coordinate with Michael Havikin when he was in town. It kind of, it helps to have two people, at least have a driver, but it's pretty simple analysis of each one, and, anyway, I can, I can get it knocked out, but I would like a map of it. Would make it, make a whole lot more sense instead of just page after page. But anyway, I don't know if I'll have time to do that or not, but I can get the, the inspection done. We do have about 80 signs. Now, I have another road question that I don't know if we need a Roads Department meeting or if we can just do it like we've been doing these other things. But the, where the, the stormwater goes under through, what would be 7th, I guess, and goes along all those houses and along, past Wells Fargo and, or what was Wells Fargo, anyway. As it goes through and then goes past the old school and down to the highway and then onto Cadillac Ranch, that whole drainage, like right now, there are some tumbleweeds and some big boxes in front of the Adams House. I, I plan to go get those myself because, you know, personally, we want to make sure it's not plugging up there, but there are some large cardboard boxes that have blown in there from somewhere. So I will get those, but that needs to kind of be on a maintenance list too, is to check that whole ditch from top all the way down so that when we do ever get a flood event, it can actually work the way it's designed. And then the other problem with those little crossings that, that they put in, there are no markers on them at all. So in the dark, you have no idea that that is a big drop-off from the town street onto the town bridge and into private property. And I think there's just probably some simple little stakes, like the blue. Usually they're like blue or black and yellow, marking an obstacle that you see along the highways. But just some sort of little, simple three-foot post that we can put on the left and the right and the front and the back of those bridges, I, I think would really help. The one that worries me the most is one over by La Posada because the sign's right there, and somebody pulling off could pull off just any old wear there, but, you know, it hasn't happened yet, but I think that's something that the engineers just overlooked.
So you're talking about those things that go over the gullies or washes or whatever they are?
Yep, well, that goes over the storm drain that, that they put in, and, and Tetchatech put that, those bridges in so that the storm drain, it's part of the storm drain project. Just finishing that project is what I'm after, to, to mark those as hazards.
So going, the ones going up Calf Canyon or the ones? So the ones going up Calf Canyon or the ones coming off the road?
From, there's just one where Calf Canyon hits, what is that road right there? Right across from Design Bill Bluff. Right across there is the first one and then there's another one. There are like three or four more until you hit the highway. There's just a few in there that really need to be marked and I'm sure it's a simple thing, but have not searched for those signs. It should just be something that we can pound in for each bridge. And then that would be the same maintenance time to go through and make sure that that drainage is clear.
So I'm going to put that into a July, into a work session because I had a long conversation today with our attorney who made some pretty strong suggestions about maintenance. So
Okay.
I will add that.
Could I add one other thing that I've been thinking about? I've gotten a couple of complaints about dust on roads, people going too fast. And a sign that I came across that I think would help to just notify, it's mostly locals, but the sign says only you can prevent speed bumps. And it would just let people know that slows speed down. And then, you know, on the gravel ones, we could dig a dip into those. The paved ones, we could put a paved speed bump on them if we need to slow traffic down.
I'm all for it.
Let's add that to the list because I can see some huge red flags with doing this. So let's, let's add that to the list and probably we're going to have to bring Chris in on some of these conversations. I just added it, Lou, thanks.
Yep, thank you.
I need to go back and check something here before we. So on the number seven, the pass-through grant to the food pantry. You'd think something easy would be easy, but it's not. So we have Ginny Burns being offered money for the food pantry to be able to do food resiliency, which means doing everything to support getting food to the community, but not buy food. So that means you can buy equipment to work with. You can buy the bags that she purchases out of her own money, all these other things that support getting food out to the community. And so what I'm going to say, because this is a bigger problem for me, not necessarily for anyone else, the bottom line is it's not as simple as Ginny Burns and I were told by the people we met with who are handing out the grant. Because it's a CDC grant, the reporting requirements are exactly as I figured they are, just like they are for any other federal money. Started at the CDC, it came to the state, it comes to county, the county gives it to a department, the department does it, gives it to us to do a pass-through. Which is fine. And I think ultimately we'll all feel great about being able to get that pass-through money. But I was told in the meeting that we have, meeting the town, and Ginny has no obligation to report how that money is spent. I did not buy that. I had a conversation with Mac McDonald yesterday. There needs to be a contract, just like we do with the CDBG money. There has to be reporting, there has to be accountability, transparency, receipts, et cetera. Now I know that Ginny Burns will do all of that, but Mac and I have to create, and thank you, Mac, for offering to do this. He'll do the agreement that we need to sign before we get any money so that we can have Ginny Burns sign so that we have a mechanism for Linda to be able to accept the money to pass it through. So that being said, stay tuned. It's not as simple as we get $10,000 and we write it off to Ginny Burns. But Ginny, if you're listening to this, I'll talk to you when you get in town, but it's moving forward just much more work than we were told. Any questions on that? All right, number eight, update on the WEPs and the status of the bike rack.
And so I have a few more. I'm still waiting on a couple more of people to send me in their cell phone account number and their company. And I will send that in this week. If others come in later, I can add them later, but I just was trying to get one packet so I could send them out as a packet. But it's all in place. I do think we ought to add that to a work session too. What they recommended was add a work session, just calling each other on a test call and making sure that they go through and that kind of thing. So yes, we've got, it's all, it's all good. Just if you haven't given me that information, send it on over and I'll add you to it.
Thank you, Lou. That'd be good. Linda? You're muted. Muted.
So I have a landline, so basically that means I can only really use it at my house. Is that right?
You, it's, you can still use it from a cell phone and you can use it from any other landline anywhere, but it's just all the connections to get from one to the other to the other. So like if, in the event, it sounds like if you were trying to call a cell phone, it may not go through because you need to have all of those connected. So when you go to the app, if you download the app on your phone, I don't know if there's a, I haven't checked to see if you could put it on a tablet or a computer, but when you download that, it gives you the choice of the WEPs, the GETS or both of them. And she said that just always click both of them so that you don't get hung on the transferring from one to the other. So, but when I tried to do the WEPs and the GETS combined, it kicked me back out because I hadn't put in my WEPs number yet. So, so you'll just, just use the GETS and try a couple of, try a couple, a couple of test calls. Try Ann's cell phone, for instance, and that's fine. Just if somebody cuts in, just it's a test call, but try her cell phone and see if you can reach her.
I've tried it, so yeah, it works. It's
Yep, so that, that's kind of the way it is. You just get a little more priority if you have both. And if you end up out on somebody else's cell phone, you can use your numbers and use their cell phone if you've got the others. So anyway.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Bike Rack Ranch.
Linda and I have looked at bike racks and we have picked out the wave unit that the community center folks recommended also. It will require two concrete pads with four bolt installations, but we're going to go ahead and get that coming, Mayor, with this council's approval today.
Brad, is there some concrete up there to mount it into?
It's got a four bolt mounted each end. Four bolts coming out or four toggles. We'll figure out how to put it to the ground, get it in plug. Potentially we could have two little concrete pads that the rack mounted on. We thought we'd get it here and look at it and try to figure out where to put it. Tina and I were texting back and forth a little bit today, so we're trying to figure out where it needs to go. So we hope to go ahead and get that thing installed here shortly, right, Linda?
Right.
Yeah, so that sounds good. Just, yeah, and Tina, everybody, y'all have a good eye on just keeping it out of the traffic of cars and pedestrians and still in a spot that's easy to see it and park a bike. So that's, that's great. I thought it looked like a good one.
So I have a question. Didn't we already approve by vote over a year ago to do this?
I think it was in the fall before we were going to have it for spring, Mayor. And I do think it has been approved. I just, we don't have to vote to approve it tonight. Just tell you, everybody say, all right, get it coming and we'll do that.
My recollection, I'll go back and double check and if I'm wrong, we'll put it on for a vote, but go ahead and order because my recollection was up to 300 we had approved. I could be wrong, but I'm fine with what that looks like.
All righty, we'll get her comment.
Any objection from anybody? Okay. Thanks for getting that done. So number nine, I put on discussion and vote on virtual versus in-person lifetime council meetings. Anybody have a thought on what they want to do? Are you, so the options I think are kind of like stay completely virtual, go completely in-person or do hybrid.
Mayor, I've got an idea. You know, I always have an idea. It's not a good idea. I think we should stay remote through July and look at August 1st and kind of see where we are and decide about whether to go back in person. I don't, I don't think we'll have too many summer meetings. I know there's some changes in the scheduling. So that's my idea.
Anyone else have an opinion?
My basic opinion is I'm not ready to go just to total in-person. I really like this idea of being able to log in and if you're out of town or somewhere where you can't get right into the community center, I think it involves everybody. We've got a pretty good setup now to where can show the screen in the community center. Erin and Craig figured that out to where their projector actually works. It was too lit up for, when I was trying it. So they've got that figured out. So if it's partially in-person, you can still see everybody that's on the screen. So I think if anything, that would be it. But if there's not a need for that yet, I don't see any reason to complicate it.
Jim, Linda, any comments?
Yeah, the hybrid, the hybrid is okay, but you know, this is working fairly well. We're getting 19 people at this meeting and people are apparently participating or listening and I don't see a problem with the virtual. It's very convenient for me, I know. Although it's nice to go in-person once in a while, you know, just to reminisce.
I agree, I agree.
I agree. Well, I think there seems to be at least a consensus that we're not going back to solely in-person. So let's kind of play it by ear, maybe keep it, well, definitely keep the virtual and then maybe add in one or, you know, one a month for the next two months where we do it where we have it running from there so that we don't lose touch with how to do it and running from there. I kind of like going and having it to myself or just me and Lou and our technician. You know, it's just kind of fun to feel like we were back doing something in person without the people. Sorry, everybody.
I would only ask from a logistical standpoint that we ensure that we schedule when we are going to do hybrid and have people there that were able to provide appropriate timeliness so our, so Craig, so our technician knows when he needs to be there.
Which is, which is a good point that I might as well raise it now. Today was a pretty good example of too many people trying to give direction. And so what I'd like is a consensus that we turn this over to our manager to give consensus as to working with Craig. Like she'll be the one who says to Craig, yeah, you're doing remote for the next two weeks or you're doing remote two weeks and the third week you're going to come in and do setup. And I totally accept my responsibility for sticking my thumb in the pie. So is everybody okay with our manager taking that on as one of her duties?
Yes.
And that'd be awesome, Erin.
I will take your feedback. You tell me what you want. This is, this is a group, but yeah, I, whatever I can do to help simplify the communication, let's go ahead and do that. And I, you know, I really appreciate everything Craig does and would like to, you know, ensure that he, he has all the resources he needs to be successful. So thank you.
And when, when there is a meeting in the community center, whether anybody's there or not, it does require extra time on his end for, I mean, he doesn't live far away, but there's still a commute time. Then it requires one of us to go and open up everything and then moving the equipment around to get that computer set up. So it's a, you know, it's a nice little feature that he figured out how to do that remotely. It's working well. So anyway, but we're ready to go, whichever way needs to happen and I'm happy to help open up on those days. If it's maybe the first, first meeting of the month or the last meeting of the month or whatever, maybe a routine schedule if you want that to happen.
Yeah, I think that's something we can talk about and work out with Erin, but let's let her handle the controls rather than three or four of us giving direction. Number 10. I sent the email out to the council, but for everybody else who's listening, the Community Development Block Grant, all pieces have been covered as far as we know. We have stage one in and approved, stage two went in before Memorial Day weekend, which was good because on Tuesday, Memorial Day, they, well, pretty much crashed on that Thursday. Erin and I had difficulty getting everything squared away. And on Tuesday, they, Friday, they had no staff to work with. Tuesday, everybody was trying to upload and we were sitting back very happy because Erin was able to get everything in and uploaded and before the weekend. Then we had the environmental review and Jimmy, you were not kidding, I know now why you didn't want to take this on. Holy cow, it was a lot of work, but thank you again, Erin. Between the two of us, we manipulated what we were doing. She was really good at finding things online, getting things uploaded. And we met with CDBG yesterday to do a preliminary look. We were told to submit the environmental review. If there's an error or something we need to fix, we have the opportunity to do that. But as far as we're concerned, sitting here today, everything is in and waiting for final approval. So we'll see if it did go in correctly and everything is fine, we'll get a letter and a contract sometime by July 1. If not, we have time to fix the environmental review, but everything else at this point seems good. So Erin, thank you. It was
Amazing job, both of you guys, all of you.
I'm trying to quit thinking about it for a couple of weeks. Number 12, this was the easy fix where I really wanted that kennel word in there and I just didn't hope nobody noticed and it got caught, so I took it back out. I sent everybody a correction. I don't know if Linda yet has corrected the one online, but on the website she has. So that's been fixed. Number 13, update on the proposed solar farm. I think the, the main take on this is that Jeff Coombs of AES met with me and Josh Newing, did a walkthrough. Then we met with the School Institutional Trust Lands Administration, which was the executive director, the assistant executive director and Brian Torgerson. The LSE AES then reached back out to SITLA and they're having a bigger conversation about whether or not the lease could be moved from the side of the road that it's currently on to the other side of the road where there's already been some leasing. It's smoother, flatter. It's in a more ideal spot, but financially it would cost more to the LSE. It would also reopen up the bidding process. So they are in communication and talking. We have, and I have it here somewhere, Jeff Coombs, who is the representative for AES, gave us an email address for people who have community comment. And so I'm going to read it and then I'll ask that it be put in the minutes so that people can make a community comment on the solar farm to the LSE. So it's community, just the word community, right behind it, inquiries@aes.com. So I'm going to spell it, C-O-M-E-R-Y-M-E-R-Y-U-N-A-N-C-I-T-T-Y-I-N-N-A-N-C-I-R-I-E-S@aes.com. All lowercase letters. And they are, they are expecting that we will have people making public comment. Overall, I thought everything went well. I think that I will be stunned if they move it. We also talked a little bit with them about the We also talked a little bit with them about the SITLA land exchange. We talked to SITLA about that, the SITLA land exchange in the Bluff bench. And so there's public comment on the SITLA land exchange. It's in the, I think in our new business, but I'll give you those dates. So any questions on that?
Mayor, I wrote a letter to the, I sent a letter in today to the Salt Lake Tribune advocating that they move that field over to the east side of the highway and stay out of the bear's ears. So look in the Salt Lake Tribune tomorrow if they decide that it was a good letter, they may publish a letter to the editor.
Okay. And that was the Salt Lake Tribune. Grant's not even asked. All right then, if there's nothing else on that, number 14, a report on projects by the town manager.
Thanks, Ann. So I've been working on a couple of different things overall, just kind of getting my bearing and getting fully, fully immersed in everything for the town of Bluff. As Ann mentioned, we were able to submit that environmental review. So very thankful to have that off our plates, at least for right now. I've been doing multiple trainings with the Utah League of Cities and Towns. They have a lot of great resources online. And so I'm doing trainings to ensure that I am fully, fully up to speed for all kind of the elected officials and appointed, appointed employees trainings that are available. I have, I have worked on the audiovisual tech job description. So it'll be my goal kind of in administrative position to ensure that we have a record of all job postings to, you know, just to kind of help us in the future if and when, you know, additional jobs need to be boasted or if we have to post jobs again. I believe, Linda, did that get sent out, that, that job posting? I can share it too if necessary.
It did get sent out. Go ahead, Linda.
So if, so that would be something that I would ask that you all review. You know, it would be kind of, you know, of course, you've already hired an AV tech, but I want to ensure that we do have that integrated into our files. And then finally, I'm continuing to work with, look at quotes for our IT services. I know it had been mentioned in the last meeting that we were looking at our contract with Netforce to ensure they're able to provide, or that, you know, they had providing the, you know, adequate services. I'm currently looking at quotes from another entity as well and reaching out to them. So I hope to have updates for you soon regarding that for, for your review. Those are the projects that I'm, I'm most focused on right now.
That's great. Any questions for Erin? Well, she really took on a big project with this environmental review. So in the meantime, she's been doing a lot of other things. Really appreciate it. We'll put this back on for policies for everybody to make a comment on and then approve moving forward in the future.
Thank you very, very much, Erin. Thanks a lot for all the stuff you're doing. Thank you. It's great.
So number 15, I'm raising this because several people in town have actually read the edits that we made to the zoning ordinance. And out of those readings have come questions about why is it that we haven't done anything about the temporary flags that a couple of businesses and, well, a couple of businesses have up in town? And those are the flags that are delineated in 6.01, 1.140 of the zoning code. And specifically, the, the ones they're talking about are the ones that wave in the wind. There's a 20-day limit on them. I had not really thought about who all had them and I have a fairly good idea where they are now. I've talked with our attorney about, you know, how do we handle violations or possible violations? And so what Chris McInnany has suggested is that he draft a letter to the businesses that we identify and send that and see what the response is. And so I'm asking if people want to have me move that forward with Chris. I would like to do it. I think we're just at a point now where we need to start enforcing what we've passed. And we've had several people request that this be done, so.
I'm in favor of doing that, Mayor. I support that.
Do you need a vote to move this forward to Chris?
You know, I'd like to because it will be a letter then that I bring back and have you read so we could just get it out.
So made. It's a letter approving a letter to the attorney.
Second.
Anything else from anyone? Then all in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Then it's unanimous. We dealt with number 16, the friends of Peter Mason's request. Number 17, I did not attend the virtual meeting in Moab with UDOT because I was up on the bench with. Yes, Lou, you attended, right?
Yep, I can give you a rundown. Basically, the, the reason for the meeting is it's to make their 30-year plan. So it's updated every four years and they were soliciting input from the local leaders to know what were the needs out in the community. So Grand County, let's see, Grand, I need a list here of them so I remember. Price, Carbon, anyway, of Moab City, San Juan County, all of them are represented in this group to the UDOT. And the, the officials were the top guys. They're the top directors that came to this meeting to get this input. There were some people in person up in Moab and then there were a few of us online. There weren't as many, it didn't seem like, as the initial meeting. And this was a review of the initial meeting. Erin Richards, our new town manager, she was logged in and Michael Havikin came in just a few minutes into the meeting. We were, had an overview of what they had heard on their first meeting. And one of the, the things that they really did hear was the safety corridor along 191, both in passing lanes, that sort of thing, and also in bike lanes and pedestrian. So they have four, four goals. One is better mobility, good health, connected communities, and a strong economy. So one of the, the big needs here is connecting our school safely out along the highway and getting a walkable town for Bluff. And so those, all four of those met, all of the different communities had bike lanes, bike paths. Everybody had requests for that sort of thing. So that was a big one. They, and they do have it. It's on the 30-year plan, most likely. They're still soliciting input from other areas of the state, different regions. And then they will make it as part of their plan. One of the big takeaways that I had was that you need to have an active transportation plan in place. There's one program that funds it and it's called SS4A. They had it in sort of a four categories. I don't know what the SS4A stands for, but it's transportation.gov backslash SS, like Sam, for A, like Apple. And that is grant money that's available for local governments. And they do planning projects and the planning project, the application is due in the fall. And that one seemed like a really good one. They were talking about, you know, the corridor all the way down through. It's this whole southwest region. And so it's from, from up in Price all the way down through. They're still talking four lanes. They're still trying to figure out bypasses and that kind of thing. One of the things that we're talking about with, in response to this need for bicycles and foot traffic, somebody in Price, I believe it was the mayor, asked, Emery had contacted them about using their fiber path and they were all over it. They were just like, yes, that would protect our fiber and it's already the easements there. So it might be an easy way for some of these paths. Like Elaine Guzler was one of them that was online and she's been one that's been pushing for the long, longer bike path. Move Utah is another part of UDOT that is looking at the health and the, the safe travel. Let's see. Rebecca Benali was there representing San Juan County Health. Another interesting thing is that when you do look at that long bicycle route that they want to do from Moab down to Monument Valley, the Adventure Cycling.org is the association that has the final say whether or not there's a bike route, a national bike route. If bike route isn't on their plan, then UDOT doesn't look at it. So they are the ones with the control over that. However, that became, I'm not sure. But so at the very end of the meeting, I asked a couple of questions and Chris Hall is one of the main directors. The woman in charge brought him over and I had a good discussion with him just, you know, face to face on the computer after the meeting. And he has given a couple of contacts of who to help to get this active transportation plan going. And he said that the best way to help Bluff to do this would be to do, combine with the safe routes to school groups and that we wouldn't have to wait for that whole entire bike route to work in Bluff. I think they would like this community input as part of that plan to figure out if you want it along the highway or if we want it through town or whatever. When our town's only a, you know, mile or two long, it's probably not a big decision. But there are other routes and they, they want to make sure that that's all community plan and to, to go forward on it. But, and then there was a, let's see, what was her name? Anyway, one of them was confused on what kind of a trail we wanted through and said, oh, no, we don't do that because you all want a soft surface trail. And I said, no, we've got soft surface trails. We're, we're talking an ADA, hard surface, safe sidewalk kind of thing. And she said basically to herself that, well, I need to come back down and meet with Bluff again. So we're, we're still on their radar and got some things to keep looking forward to. But this, this meeting also was just focused on all modes of travel. It's not just the cars. It's not rail. It's not trains. It's, it's everything, including foot traffic. And it was also rural. So it's, it's all of the rural focus from UDOT.
Thanks, Lou. That's, it's really helpful. I wish you'd take a closer look at that once you get the information.
Okay. Yeah, and yeah, if you need, if you have more questions or, you know, I don't know what else we need to do to follow up with all of this. I'm still working with the CIRD group. And so that, that's in place. But if there's something more we want to do as a town looking at that planning project.
It all sounds really positive and I would like to do some more. And it would be nice to dovetail with CIRD in some way. There seems to be a lot of interest in this. And there's some, just keep in mind that our general plan does have a section on transportation as it is required to do. And from that basis would emerge a more complete planning process. The planning grant might be a good thing to have.
Also keep working on it and bring it back when we've got some information that we need to move on.
Okay, yeah, and my main remaining question is if we can apply for that planning grant without having an active transportation plan in place. So that's kind of our next question with the CIRD group is to figure out how you get one of those, if that is part of what this EPA grant might provide or if it's just the community input and then we still need to get an active transportation plan. So there's, it was sort of like just an offhand comment that, oh, well, before anybody does any project, you've got to have a, a, an active transportation plan in place. It's like, wait, where do you get that, you know? Who, who provides that? So it's when they're all working in the system on and on and on, all these terms are so familiar to them. But the more times we go and, and more people that say, hey, this is what we want, the more they're listening, so.
Well, thank you. That's a lot of information to talk.
Erin, Erin, you were there. Did you have anything more to add to that?
It's a very good wrap, Lou. I would just say that as we, as I am helping coach you all through your long-term strategic plans, items like this that do tie specifically back to your general plan, these are good things to be thinking of that we can kind of insert in and add milestones to. So this will not be the end of it, but that's, you covered it quite well, so thank you.
All right, well, thanks for, thanks for coming to it. And we missed you, Ann, but that's, that's okay, Ann. I'll send you a bit of a write-up.
All right, thank you. I, yeah, I was torn, but I felt like we needed to grab that opportunity to meet with AES and not have them pass through town. Okay, the one you're all waiting for, number 18, how are we going to staff the offices for the next whatever number of days? In the month of June, there were 17 days we have to cover for compliance with the federal court order. We have to be open. We have to have people present during every one of those weekdays. San Juan County covered the first day, June 1st. They are not covering tomorrow. I will cover tomorrow. They will cover the 15th and the 22nd. That leaves each of us with, what did I figure out? Right around four days each. Is that right? 3.4. Let me, let me do the calculation because I'm spacing out. But let's talk about this week. I think that what I have is, Grant was yesterday, I'm today, I'm tomorrow. Linda's taking Thursday. Who's taking Friday the 10th?
I could take Friday the 10th. What do I do?
Sit here and bring a book, bring some work, find a project that you're working on that you want to entertain yourself with and think about lunch.
Is it nine to noon?
Nine to three, or 10 to three.
10 to three.
Yeah. And Linda's relieved me so I ran for lunch. If you're there and you don't have lunch, text me, I'll come up and relieve you, Jim. But everything, it's in the mayor's office, just so the key to her office gets you the keys of the kingdom.
So everybody would take 3.4 days. So let's talk about this at the work session today, but take a look at the rest of the month and see what we need to do. No, we do not hire anybody because this voting machine is locked up in our trust. No, I do not want people just volunteering to sit in the office if they're not an elected official. No, we're not going to hire anybody to do this. Sorry, we have a federal court order that San Juan County has to comply with and we have to comply with, so sorry, that's just the way it is. And I, yeah, so there you go.
So, Ann, I do have a question. Is it our election or is it San Juan County's election?
It is the election for the school district. So those of you who got your ballot and didn't look at it, the school district is also part of the election, which makes it ours, as well as anyone who is a registered Republican in the state or in the county. So it is technically all of our election.
So it's, but I, I realize it's the school board. That's, that's it. But whether the town is responsible for the school board election was kind of my question. And, and it's fine, I can sit up there a couple of days. It just seems like an unusual request from San Juan County.
It's not, okay, so the request is from the federal judge who issued the redistricting order that these will all be available for people to come in and drop off their ballot at the ballot machine or at the ballot box. One day a week, they have to have in-person voting. That's the court order. We could hire San Juan County to send somebody every day and sit here. I do not think any of us want to see that in the budget. So it has to happen. If I were not going to be gone, which is part of the discussion tomorrow, if I didn't have things I need to do, I would happily sit here the entire time. I don't care. I'm working anyway. Doesn't matter if I work at home at the table or here. But we need to cover and that's just a fact.
So are you in the, it looks like you're in the office, but where do people come with this ballot box? Is it, do they come right into the office or is it out in the community center?
The ballot box has to be in a security area. The community center is not a security area, so it has to be rolled into an office. So it sits in my office. It's about a two and a half or three, probably two and a half foot by two and a half foot and about three feet high. foot by two and a half foot and about three feet high ballot box that's locked and they will come in and empty it of the one ballot that's been dropped off in almost a week.
Okay, but the ballot droppers come right into that side door and come around the little hallway? Okay.
Yeah, they come in through the door, come to the first office and make a left into my office, which is the first office. Yep. Sorry, I don't want to harp on this, but I don't want to go through this tomorrow, we just have to do it and that's it. So moving to update on West Park irrigation system, the irrigation system, do you want to give a quick update as to where they are?
We've got, so Dudley and Paul Martini installed the new state-of-the-art irrigation system last month and because, well, in part because the summer is so hot, there are three different valves, they have to be turned off and on several times during a week and so we decided to get a remote. Paul suggested a remote, a specific remote, that he could switch valves from his house. And so it's supposed to be here any day and he will program it and get us the instructions on how to use it, we'll have those. Probably, he's there quite a bit, he's in town quite a bit and so we'll talk about when he's out of town, who does it. We're also kind of monitoring the water meter because we're not sure if doing it manually, it got left on a lot more than it should have. This is our, the water bill last month was really big, so, and so it may be that the meter is defective, so we need, you know, to get the remote and get the next water bill, you know, to monitor what's happening.
Well, thanks, go ahead. Go ahead.
I said, that sounds good to me. Thank you, Linda.
And thanks to those guys doing the work, really appreciate it. Is there anything other than in Monticello, June 15th, from 6 to 8, is the SITLA land exchange meeting? And in Blending, June 22nd, 6 to 8, is the second one of the School Institutional Trust land exchange meetings? And I'll post this ad at the post office where it was in the San Juan record. Anybody else have another?
Bluff Water Works, they have on my notes, meets tomorrow night. They meet at the library, what, 7 o'clock?
Does planning and zoning meet?
Not this week, it'll be next week.
Hey, Ann, this is Jen.
Jen, yes.
We are not having a water board meeting tomorrow, Melanie is sick and we are going to wait for next month because she doesn't have bills ready to submit yet. So water meeting tomorrow is canceled.
Thanks for that, Jen. Good to know.
Motion to adjourn.
At 7:55. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you, it's unanimous, I'm turning the recorder off. Good evening, everyone.
And thanks, Erin, for running the meeting.